We'll call. Mr. Cowan.
President.
Dr. Taub. Mr. Landman.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Present virtually in Free Michigan.
Ms. Bernard.
Present in Commerce, Michigan.
And Dr. Guadalupe.
Present virtually.
Dr. Hans.
Present in Bloomfield Township, Michigan.
Ms. Newman.
Present virtually from Pontiac, Michigan.
Ms. Root.
Here in Rochester, Michigan.
Mr. Torres. Ms. Amy Dyer.
Here virtually from Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Okay, so that brings us to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not have any public comment this evening, but we do have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our business ops. So we have our August financial review by Anya, our CFO. Go ahead, Anya.
Good afternoon, everybody. Get everybody on one side. Okay, we're going to look at August financials. So this is officially last fiscal year now because we are in October. So we are in fiscal year 22. So this is going to be us starting to wrap up fiscal year 21. So if you can go to the next slide. All right, so this is revenue. You can see is remaining fairly consistent from the last few months. And compared to last year is up a bit, but that's really just because last year there were some hills and valleys there because of them just straightening out the direct care wage funding and that. Whereas this fiscal year, that was a little more consistent from April on. So doing well upwards of $30 million a month in revenue. Moving to the next slide, please. So this slide is looking at eligibles. And you can see eligibles are remaining fairly consistent still up there. There was an announcement that the emergency order that was set to expire on December 31st is going to be extended. And what that means for us is that no one can come off of Medicaid or Healthy Michigan. So that did require the actuary to adjust rates slightly because no one will be coming off. So we can expect eligibility to remain at minimum where we're at now, if not higher, as anybody else comes back on. So, next slide, okay. So this is compared to September 30th of 2020 versus August. And so you can see cash and investments is up pretty significantly. So when we look at it compared to last fiscal year, we obviously have a significant more amount of revenue coming in fiscal year 21 than 20 primarily from eligibility and rates. Receivables is down. You will start to see receivables tick back up as we start our year-end processes and start to accrue anything that's outstanding. Other assets remains minimal and relatively consistent. And then capital assets just slightly down related to depreciation. So liabilities, if you look at liabilities are down compared to the end of the fiscal year for the exact reason I said for the last slide is that at year-end, we start to accrue any outstanding liabilities. And right now, we haven't started that process yet. So this is just anything current that we have outstanding. Due to state is down. So we have caught up on any payments that are due to the state. Employee payables is roughly the same. And then long-term debt just continues to go down related to long-term notes related to the RCC and group home bonds. So that means that our net position is up significantly from the prior end of the fiscal year. Total liabilities are down. And so therefore, our net position is up. We're at about $94 million as of right now. Revenue comparison, so this is comparing year over year. And so you can see that, as I mentioned, our revenue is up and that's primarily due to eligibles and then also a little bit related to the direct care wage funding that we have received. State general fund is just slightly under and that's the continuation of that reduction that we are seeing. County funds remains flat. And then all other funds is just slightly less and that's primarily due to grants. Expense comparison year over year. You can see our expenses are down slightly. It is administration up slightly in provider network and that's primarily related to continuing to push out additional funds for the direct care wage funding. And then grants are roughly flat. And then all other is roughly flat as well. So compared year over year, total revenue is up. Total expenses are up slightly. And net income is also up compared to last fiscal year. These are our top 10, or our top 15 providers paid in this month and the amounts that they were paid. And with that, I can take any questions.
This is Jonathan, I have a question. If it's okay. Just want to make sure it's all right with Christine because she's cheering. Okay. You mentioned that because the emergency order is going to extend, we're not going to have people fall off the registries for the Michigan Medicaid, Healthy Michigan, et cetera. And you said that as a result, our rates may be adjusted?
When the actuary did the rates for fiscal year 22, it was with the assumption that we would see some people fall off of Medicaid and therefore, the capitation to eligibility ratio will go down a bit. But because that's not going to happen, they actually have to reduce the rate slightly because the number of eligibles will stay higher throughout the fiscal year than would have had it expired.
Okay. So that's as if they reduce the per member per month that comes in. That's because they're trying to work off a fixed budget of how much they want to pay us.
Well.
Or to every CMH.
Officially, it's actuarially sound rates. And therefore, that's the actuarially sound. But when you're dividing by a different number of people, you would adjust it because the number of people is going to be higher as opposed to lower.
Okay, but that's not, and it's not going to just affect us?
No, but everybody.
That's going to affect every PIHP across the state?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. That was the only question.
Okay.
Not seeing any questions online. I don't know if I'm missing any. I don't see any hands up.
I have a quick question, sorry. This is Hadass.
Go ahead, Hadass.
Thank you. So Anya, are you able to tell us the rate difference per person? Like what, you know?
I don't have that in front of me, but based on the adjustment they're making, it would have just been a very small, like 1, 200ths of the actual rate because it's just such a slight adjustment. But in dollar wise, because the matrix of the people we serve and are paid for is based on age, gender, disability designation and diagnosis, it's not just $2 different. It's every rate cell changes and the rate cell has roughly, I think, 90 to 100 different rates in it.
So you think it's in like pennies?
Oh, yeah. Not, for each individual that's eligible that we're paid for, yeah. It's barely pennies.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
I think that was one of the shortest financial reviews that we've had. Thanks, Anya. Okay, next up is we have a few contractual obligations to review. These are ones that are, as a reminder, over $100,000 that will need our approval. So first up is the direct support professional training contracts. And Tricia, I believe, is, yep, Tricia is going to be presenting on this.
Hello, good evening. I'm going to be presenting two contracts today. The first one is Mork. The second one will be TTI. Both of these are in regards to direct support professional training. So just to give you a little bit of background, prior to fiscal year 19, these training contracts were a line item within both agencies' core provider contract. Beginning in fiscal year 19, this was broken out as a separate contract, but was seen as a service contract, which is why you have not seen this contract before. So as Kalana is going through all of our contracts and helping us with these, this is why this is the first time that you're seeing this contract. So we do, at this point, contract out our direct support professional training. And these are multiple trainings that are required from Medicaid, PIHP contract that both Mork and TTI do. Within the executive summary that you have as well, I went back until fiscal year 19 to give you the idea of how many people were trained. The contract amounts have remained the same, but you'll be able to see the difference in the number of people that are trained from year to year. So for the Mork contract, it is just over 1.2 million. And then if you go to the next slide for TTI, it is 200, just over 254,000. Are there any questions about either of these contracts or further explanation on the trainings? I did cite the policy that lists all the different trainings. We have multiple training guidelines. And so it's, I see Dr. Hans has his hand up. Dr. Hans, you have your hand up?
Direct care. Hello, I think, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah. How is the direct care training provided to the direct care staff? I mean, is there any monitoring? Because I actually heard this morning that somebody asked me, how do we access the trainings that are provided for direct care staff? And this was a direct question from a direct care staff. So help me understand before I can give an educated answer to this question.
So our providers, when they do hire someone, they are able to go right to Mork or TTI, which is also detailed within our training website. They can choose either agency and then they enroll in the trainings right through the agency. These trainings are monitored and adhere to the state training guidelines group, which is a statewide group. That's kind of a subcommittee of the PIHP committee at the state where all of the PIHP training directors, providers are all in this work group where we review the standards, we update them on a yearly basis, and we vet trainings across the state.
So is there a database where we can actually identify who are the people who have completed the required trainings and who have not?
Not public knowledge, but we do have access to that. Mork and TTI submit data to me on a quarterly basis. So when we need to look up somebody's training records for TTI, I do have that information for Mork. We do have to go through Mork since we do not have access to their learning management system. But we're able to pull the transcript.
Well, this person is in the Mork system who asked me the question. So I would like to know actually, is the training actually being provided? So I don't know because this person is quite responsible and she is always contacting me to get information on different things about, you know, the resources.
So yes, the training is being provided. Prior to COVID-19, the trainings were done in person. Now, the majority are all virtual and they are starting back some in-person trainings. If she is going through Mork, it is all provided through their learning management system. And each provider who uses that system will be able to access. So if she contacts her HR or supervisor, they should be able to have access to look up her transcript within the system.
So help me understand. And I just want to make, understand it that a few years ago, we had said that we were going to take over all the trainings and everybody will be trained through OCHN. Is that not correct? So we are, this is a delegated function then?
At this time, yes. So if you refer to the executive summary that was submitted as well, we are moving forward with the Dochebo system. So the system that I trained the board on last month for your trainings, we are moving towards running all of our required trainings through that system. However, that does take a lot of time to create the content and to be able to build out that system. So we have started that. We had to do the RFP process for that contract. And then we are now building out contracts. So we anticipate this may be the last year for this contract. However, we may need to RFP out any additional training because there are just some trainings that are done better in person.
Exactly, yes.
So.
In my opinion, most trainings are done better in person because there is a little bit more interaction and people feel freer to ask questions. But yeah, in the current situation, that's not always possible. Is there a timeline as to when this is going to be completed?
We are aiming for fiscal year 23, but that's really dependent upon the creation of the content, what will need to be RFPed out in pilot sessions with the providers. So it will be, it's not something that's really, I guess, can be done quickly. We really want to make sure that we do this right and create really comprehensive and sustainable trainings within the learning management system.
Are there any other organizations in the state or in the country that are doing this?
Yes. Most, within the state, I would say Detroit Wayne has their own learning management system, but they also still contract up some trainings. And Macomb also recently purchased a learning management system as well. I work closely with my counterparts there as well. There's a lot of different CMH, PIHPs that do it different across the states. So not everybody contracts it out the way that we do.
So this is very critical because especially in this last year, last year and a half, since the pandemic, I am really amazed at how well the direct care workers have performed under the heaviest odds. And I think training is very important. And I think we should do our best to give them every opportunity to learn. So if it is okay with your leadership that if we could get an update as to quarterly or so as to how this transition is going forward? Because this is critical.
Absolutely, I completely agree with you. It will be something that I will add into my quarterly reports as well. We have begun building out that system. We have all of OCHN, all of OCHN contracted employees and the board now on Dochebo so that we're able to build that out. And we will begin now with a few select providers that helped us choose this system so that we'll make sure that we get it right. We don't want to just put together something and put it out there to the providers. We really want their input on how they're able to access, ensuring the right trainings are there and really streamlining this. So our required trainings, not just for direct support professionals, but thinking across our entire network. We want all required trainings to be accessed through the OCHN LMS.
Yeah, I must say this though, that it's going to be a little more complex for the direct care workers because of, and the turnover is so fast. So yeah, I agree, it's not going to be easy. It's easy to train board members and professionals and credentialing and all that because a lot of the training is required through credentialing requirements as well. So people are proactive. But for direct care workers, I think it's a lot more difficult to access or the time that they are given to get appropriate training or cutting-edge training. So I'm glad that we are moving forward with this transition. But I hope that it is done right and would like to be informed about it periodically. Thank you.
I will definitely keep you informed. And I'll also let you know that Mork has been using a learning management system called Cornerstone since I've come on board with OCHN. So the majority of our direct support professionals are very familiar with a learning management system. And especially over the last year and a half, they've accessed all trainings either through that learning management system or through Microsoft Teams or Zoom.
Yes, yeah, I'm aware of that. But it seems that there is a lot more that needs to be done in terms of covering the different things that they face in their everyday work. Now, required training and mandated training is something different because there is a curriculum and there is a checklist. And we all have, we all go through that in our professional lives that there are certain units you have to complete by a certain date. But for these people, the day-to-day difficulties and challenges that they are faced with is what they need or need support with.
I agree. And Mork and TTIs have done a great job with continuing to update their trains to include those issues. And we will work hard to continue to do the same. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Vijaya. Hadass, I thought I saw your hand was up before. Did you still have a question?
Yeah, I put it down. I guess I can ask my question though. So for this coming year, Mork will be doing all the trainings. And what is the system where you have, how often do you contact them to find out if the trainings have been done or not with their constituents or how does that work?
So it's Mork and TTI that do the trainings. They submit the training data to me on a quarterly basis. Also, as requested, they'll give us data. And then our quality management team, as they audit, will audit the trainings of the providers to ensure that they are completed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vijaya, you had another question?
Yes, I did. It's a follow-up on what Hadass is excellent question. Could we, at some point, do a survey directly from the direct care workers as to what they are looking for in their training and where the gaps are as to, so that we can improve the quality of their training?
Definitely, we're actually working on that on a state level. On that group that I mentioned earlier that I sit on, we have been developing a statewide survey to get feedback from providers and from the direct care professionals so that we can continue to improve those state training guidelines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tricia.
Thank you very much.
Right. Up next, we have Wendy Schiller. She's going to present on the MCET contract. Wendy, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to present the contract with Michigan Consumer Evaluation Team, or MSAT. The duration of the contract is through fiscal year 22 in the amount of $75,000. So this contract has been renewed on an annual basis dating back to 2003. So previous to this, we haven't really presented this contract because it didn't really meet the threshold of the $100,000 that's required. But we were advised by our legal staff that we should really view this contract more as a multi-year contract because of the nature of the annual review and renewal. So that's why it's being presented to you today. So the purpose of the contract is really to obtain a vendor that's going to conduct member experience surveys on behalf of OCHN. And for fiscal year 22, we're looking at surveys to measure people's satisfaction with access, with telemedicine services, with their general treatment services overall, and then the complex case management program. So you have other details and the materials that were given to you last week. But are there other questions that anyone has at this time?
Yes, it looks like Hadass has a question.
Okay, so I've seen their surveys now for three years. And I could be wrong, but if I'm recalling accurately, the percentage of the member experiences of, compared to like the members, is fairly low. So I'm just wondering, have we researched any other people that do do these survey contracts? I mean, are we 100% satisfied with them? Unless you want to say differently. I'm just always surprised at the limited number of member experiences we see when we do look at the surveys. I always thought it was an interesting thing, but it doesn't seem to be changing that they're having the ability to improve the member experience survey number of participants. So I was just, maybe I'm off, maybe I'm totally recalling it wrong. It seems that other people have questions or comments too. So that's my question.
Okay. Well, our ECHO survey, our Experience of Health and Outcomes, is the largest survey we do. And the number of surveys that are required is prescribed by NCQA. So we have to reach a certain number to make that a valid survey that NCQA will consider. The other surveys, the nature of using MSAT, we like to use MSAT because it is a peer review process. So most of their surveys are done either in person or by phone. And they are surveying their peers. So we get very candid responses and therefore, we have more accurate data to analyze when we're looking at areas for improvement. So I think that's why some of the numbers of surveyors may be lower because of that method of surveying gives us more personal contact with people and their experience. We can certainly look at other organizations. We've been very happy using MSAT. But you know, it could be something that we could consider expanding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then I think I saw Jonathan and then Malkaya. So Jonathan, go ahead.
Thank you. Wendy, so I want to add to the question that Hadass raised. I know we have a number of different surveys. Some seem to be a bit more effective in terms of getting responses just in terms of the base number of respondees. I'm wondering if we could leverage some, I don't know, best of breed or best approaches to improve just the responsiveness on all of our surveys so we get a bigger percentage. I know with 24,000 people, 3% respondees is about 7, is under 1,720 people. But it would be nice to try to see if there's a way to get more responses on all of these. The more feedback we get, the better job we as an organization could do for delivering service. If there's a way to even provide them, even to provide MSAT, some more capability, that would be great. In order to comment more than a question, but.
Now, the access survey, the people that come through access have to agree to be surveyed. So we survey anyone that agrees to that. So we do, you know, try to get as many as we can for that survey. The complex case management program is a very small program. The complex case management program is a very small program with very limited number of people that go through the program. So, you know, we might only get, you know, 25 in a year because that's how many people completed that program. So some of these, by nature of like what we're surveying, it's a more limited survey pool.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Malkaya?
Thank you, Rena. And thank you, Wendy, for the presentation. I just wanted to give a little history or backstory on the MSET team, Michigan Consumer Evaluation Team. This, this company is comprised of people served by the mental health system, which is one of the reasons why we have consistently renewed this contract because it was felt early on that people, peers could elicit better responses from people when, when they did the surveys. I'm not sure, well, let me put it this way. Because of COVID, the fact that a lot of people were not coming into the office, you had your telehealth visits. I'm not exactly sure how MSET conducted the survey. It would be interesting, Wendy, if we could have an MSET representative come in and just share with us how they had to pivot in order to do the survey because of COVID. I know they have done phone calling. I know they do mail out surveys. But if I remember correctly, a lot of times it was the personal interaction that tended to get better results from people. But even there's a caveat that goes along with that as well. Because a lot of times when MSET was doing the surveys in person, they would come to the, I'm sorry, supposed to have my camera on. They would come to the offices of the core agencies and set up within the office to talk to people. And many have felt, I am one of them, that if I'm in a core agency and asked about my services, I would be reluctant to share anything that was adverse with MSET because I would be fearful of the, whether or not my service delivery could be affected by my responses. And it always troubled me that sometimes the MSET surveys results would come in high, but then you would get a lot of people coming into the meetings, complaining about different things that weren't going right. So overall, I really think we need to rethink surveys, how we conduct the surveys, what we're, what we're asking. I know some of these come from the state, so we don't have that, that leeway. But we're, we're in a, a new era because of COVID. So however we can streamline and simplify, and this isn't a question for you, obviously, but however we can do what's needed and necessary to get at the data and the information that, that we need to do our work effectively, we need to do that. But it has been challenging. But again, because of that connection to people served is one of the reasons why MSET has continued these many years. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. And I just want to mention that, you know, MSET is not the only way that we get feedback and information. You know, we do a survey with our annual plan and we have feedback groups. So it's really just one way that we have that we think is effective for surveying individuals.
This is Dana. If I just want to add a comment that we're going to have MSET present to us next month and give a report to this board.
Great, thank you, Dana. Thanks for that information. Thank you, Wendy. And if nobody has any other questions, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next. We are going to have Patrick. He's actually going to touch us about two different things versus the ThunderMOP diversified amendment and then a janitorial RFP. So Patrick, go ahead.
I'm here to present the ThunderMOP diversified contract. The first one is for an extension to the existing contract from February. The original amount of the contract was 507,000. And that was the previous two-year contract. We're asking for a one-month extension in order to run the contract in conjunction with the new, newly created awarded, awarded vendor of the, of contract for cleaning. That's what we're doing. We, ThunderMOP Diversified was the old company. And the new company is Italian, Italian group. And so we're asking that we give permission and authorization to run this contract for one additional month in conjunction with the new awarded contract. Well, the contract extension will allow the new janitorial service provider time to fully staff and be completely trained and prepared to take over all the services. We've done this with our other contracts for security. And it worked well to help orientate the new company to the changes that they're taking on with the new contract. So this is what we're asking for permission and approval for.
Hey, Hadass, you have your hand up?
Yeah. So is ThunderMOP diversified part of the Italian Global Solutions? I think you said that, but I wasn't clear on that.
No, the Italian Global Solutions is the name of the new contractor that will take over the cleaning service effective November 1, 2021.
Okay, so this is basically just to get this month done?
Yes, yes.
This next month done?
One-month extension for a ThunderMOP diversified.
Okay. And then, and so on another note, when the building was closed and they didn't come in, how did the contract work that for ThunderMOP? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that, though.
Well, when I looked at our actual expenses to the actual contract amount, we were way under. We really didn't even reach the threshold of this contract amount. We came in way under the expenses because we adjusted, we made adjustments due to virtual, staff working virtually from home. And so the, we just gave you the contract amount, but the actual expenses did not even come up to the 507,000 amount. But just for transparency, we wanted to provide and let the board know that we are running this contract in conjunction with the new contract. So there wouldn't be no question as to why we had two contracts going at the same time. But we are way under the 507.
Why? I'm sorry, but can you repeat again why we need two contracts at the same time? Or have the old people trained the new people? Or I don't understand that actually.
Well, actually, the new company will start orientation and starting their paperwork, getting their staff in place. But they won't start shadowing the existing company until actually two weeks prior to them taking on full-time service. So we're really not paying the new company while, during that first month. But they are on board as our new provider. Does that make sense?
Okay, and I get, yeah, that makes sense. And that'll be, I have a couple of questions. Please present the next one. Thank you.
Okay, so we're asking for approval to run this contract for an additional month while we orientate the new company. Next. Okay, so the next contract we're looking for approval is for the, the current vendor who was awarded the RFP, Italian Global Solutions. The duration of this contract is for one year, beginning November 1 through October 31 of '22. So the proposal contract amount is for 252,000, with the possibility for it to be amended based on if we have virtual staff at home. There is some potentials to have them perform these services for less than the amount stated. But this is based off us being, you know, having staff in the building and requiring full occupancy and cleaning. Our previous contract amount was budgeted, we paid 217 for this contract. The contract was originally for two years. So we were way under, this is where I wanted to show you, we were way under the contractual amount based on the adjustments we made during COVID when we were underutilizing the build, we weren't, we weren't at full capacity in the building. And so this is what we're asking to approve the janitorial RFP contract for the 262,000 annual amount, or 252,000 annual amount. The company that was awarded, we felt they were best suited to meet OCHN's needs. And so that's why we went with them through the RFP process.
Jonathan, I thought I saw you had a question. Do you still have one?
I do not. I took my hand down.
Okay, thanks. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Yes, Hadass, go ahead.
Okay, so this has to do with the capacity of the building. I know we're not in full capacity because I know we haven't been educated on any new tenants. And I don't know how many tenants are coming in. So why would we do full capacity when not at full capacity?
Well, we, this contract is for one year. And we don't know when staff will be back full-time during the timeframe of this contract. So we contracted based on what the full capacity would look like. We always have the opportunity to adjust their schedule based on our organizational needs. But we had to, we had to RFP it based on full capacity. Because we didn't want to go and undercut and give them a low cost and then have to ask the board to increase. It's easier to come to you with the full amount than to try to come back later and add dollars to the contract.
Okay, that makes sense. So just, just so I understand logistically, who is responsible for deciding how often they come? If, let's say, we're not at full capacity? Like, how do you determine the, the rate is lowered for that month?
We just, you know, we go based on, you know, projections. And if, you know, we have our building update meetings, our teams meet, we get out, we get projections of dates of when the potential for staff to come back. We, you know, we are being provided with information on a timely basis. And so as we get information, we can make recommendations for cleaning. If we know we're going to, you know, we, we can't project out how long that would be. But as we get information, we try to make changes and adjustments to cleaning based on when staff be, if staff will be full-time in the building or if we're going to be virtual. So it's kind of based on a lot of teams collaborating together in order to make that decision. So.
All right, all right, thank you.
Christine, I did put my hand up a second time.
Jonathan?
Sure, thank you. So Patrick, so, so this new, for this new organization, Italia, we do have a contract where if we approve this at next week's board meeting, it will be for 252, 252,000. But there's also ability in there to reduce what we pay them.
That's correct.
In this, in this year. So that's what it caps out at.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This is John Paul. I, I have a question as well. Sorry, I don't have my, my iPad with me. But the, the RFPs, how many proposals did we receive?
I believe we had quite a few vendors that, that bid it on this contract. I believe it was 11.
Okay.
They had 11.
Okay.
And we actually listened to the proposal of all of them. And we narrowed it down to four.
Okay.
And, you know, we had narrowed on the last people that was brought back was, was four companies that we brought back. And based on those four, Italian group won the contract.
And forgive me, because I came in after you started. But what was the, a lot of what you're saying makes sense and sounds good, actually. So I was just inquiring, though, what was it about Italian that was over the others, the other three?
Well, they, they provided their staff with, you know, real-time communication. They had cell phones that was issued through the organization. And they provided them their own laptops. And they had real-time communication with our facility manager. And their costs, you know, they, they were able to provide it. And they had good references. I think all the criteria we looked at, they, they superseded the competition. The one that was actually, that we recommended was a lot more higher in cost than they were. So cost and service went into the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we did have a good pool to choose from.
Yeah, sounds like it, wow.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Does anybody else have any questions or follow-up? Anybody in the room?
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to Christine. And she's going to present on the CNS anti-stigma contract renewal. Go ahead, Christine.
Good evening, everyone. I am also presenting a contract that was previously identified as a line item that our chief legal officer has recommended we bring forth to the board as a separate contract. The contract is the anti-stigma team. It rests with CNS Healthcare. Our longstanding board members are probably more familiar with its origin and how it has evolved through the years. We have had the program in existence for 16 years. It started with a samstagram at that time. The amount for the contract is $344,631, which is the same amount as last year. Some of the services that the, the team provides for us and some, and this information is in your communication. But they are specifically responsible for anti-stigma initiatives in the community. This is different than BEST. BEST was an initiative that the department encouraged us to incorporate to address internal stigma with staff. I do receive a report from the anti-stigma team. So we monitor the presentations. 75% of the presentations have to be within our county. The other 25%, they have become nationally recognized and on some levels internationally recognized. So there is benefits for us as an organization to have that credibility when we are receiving that type of recognition on a national space. Normally, they, they present anywhere between 200 and 250 presentations a year. Last year, there were 224 presentations and more than 18,000 people were present during those presentations. They did continue to offer presentations on a virtual platform. We also have them present at various committees in the community. So representatives sit at the Suicide Task Force Committee. They also sit as our veterans. And within our PR work group, there's just enormous benefit to have people with lived experience when we're developing those types of programs to provide insight, to make sure the language we're using is not unintentionally promoting stigma. Are there any questions regarding the contract? It will be presented to the board for approval.
Go ahead, Hadass.
Thank you. So this is so neat. I love that we do this. I'm wondering, is there any way that we could get the list of who they made the presentations to, just to kind of get an idea where they're presenting, know where in the community?
Yeah, absolutely. That is part of the report. So the report identifies the presentation, it identifies the number of people attended, and then also identifies the number of materials that were distributed. In person, obviously, we distribute more brochures or information about how to have access to services, but I can make sure you have that report, a copy of it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Christine. Okay, so next we have Jonathan. He's going to present on the board elections and committees for the OCHN board members. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you. Next slide. All right, so every year, we go through a process in October to reap, to renew or replace or elect officers. So we serve one-year terms. It concludes right after the election of that role. It happens next week at our October board meeting. Person can run over and over again. There are no term limits. They're elected by the majority of the members duly appointed and serving. And the three board offices are chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary. Next, please. The board chairperson, that's the role I'm currently holding, presides over all meetings of the board, and shall be a non-voting ex officio member of all committees. So while I'm not tied to any one committee, I can attend those. I'm authorized to vote, or the person in this role is authorized to vote if the participation of the chairperson is necessary to constitute a quorum. So if a committee only has four people and they need a fifth, and I am there, I can be a member of that committee so they can carry on their business. Same thing goes in our regular board meeting. I vote last, but realistically, under some interpretations of rubber rules of order, the chair doesn't vote at all unless they need to cast a vote to break a tie. So I've seen it done both ways. So also, as the chair, they are authorized to, to sign, but not required to, all documents approved by the board. So an example, that would be like when we do a proclamation. And so we've had a history that the chair, when it's a, when it's a board proclamation or board resolution, that the board member, the chairperson, does sign that. The other role that the chair has is to appoint members to the various CMHA delegates. So our association has meetings, there are votes that are taken at that association, and so we're always looking for attendees to go to those conferences, like the one coming up at the end of this month. And there's usually business that happens at those sessions where they need to vote at a general assembly to approve the budget, as one example, or dues increases. And so we would have, I think it's three or four delegates that would have voting rights at that. And so the board chair would look for people to volunteer for that, and that is essentially the assignment of board delegates to that CMHA conference. And then the last thing that the board chair does is to provide and present a written report to the board monthly, and I've been doing that for the last few months. Any questions? Okay. So the other two offices are board vice chair. So in the absence of chair, the vice chair presides over the meetings, and we've had that happen from time to time, someone's on vacation or whatever. And right now, Sarah has that role. And then vice, I'm sorry, and then secretary, and they're, the secretaries are responsible for the minutes of the board, approving them, signing them, and then as well, tracking any closed session. And currently, Adam Furman holds that role. I previously held that role. Next. So there are also standing committees and liaison roles. So the business operations, which has five members, policy management, which has six members, and, let's see, the executive performance, I'm sorry, the executive director performance review committee, quite a mouthful, and then as well, three liaison roles. So business operations and policy management committee nominations, the chairs are made from the, I'm sorry, let me say it again. The board, the business operations and policy management committee nominations are made by the board chairperson and confirmed by the board at the October meeting. So what that means is at that meeting, I'll ask who is on business ops at the time, do you want to stay on it, would you like to move over? If there's an opening at business ops, if someone on policy wants to move over, they can make the, they can have the opportunity to join the business ops instead. And so that's what happens, that's what the first bullet means, is we're shuffling who wants to be on business ops or on policy management. No one is forced to leave one to join another. It's really open to those that are currently on there. Okay? As well, policy, let's see, policy management and business ops, the way the bylaws are written today, it says that they can meet as a committee of the whole. Alternatively, they can be, which is alternatively chaired by the various standing committee chairs. So right now, it's Christine Ruggan that's doing it. She is the vice chair of business operations. Next month, it would be the chair of policy management. Any questions so far? All right. Next slide. So the policy management committee has six board members. Just so you know, I flip-flopped from before. That was business ops with five, policy with six, so I thought I'd leave with policy management this time. So policy management has six board members. The committee's responsibilities are to focus on programmatic policy issues, to maintain and enhance sound programmatic practice with regard to needs assessments, analysis and application of strategies, development and supportive services and supports, and innovation. I stress that because I'm a fan of innovation, I think a lot of us are. Monitoring of provider services, community coordination and collaboration efforts, quality improvement, and information systems development. That's like our Odin system. It collects the speeds and feeds the statistics of what goes on in the organization. And the chairperson's responsibilities are to run those sessions, and the vice chair, if there is one for there, is to back up the chair, and they are on a monthly basis to provide and present a written report to the board monthly, as you've seen in recent months. Next slide. Business ops has five members, policy at six, business ops has five, there's our 11 plus the voice, plus the board chair, because ex officio. The committee's responsibilities are to focus on fiscal policy that enhance and maintain the sound fiscal practice, and it's related to revenue planning, budget and financial status, financial integrity of the operations matters, and fiscal integrity of providers. Basically, we're trying to make sure that the ship stays righted, that because we are a, we are a payer entity, and we have a delegated for the most port, most part source of providers, we want to make sure that those that are delivering services, services and supports are able to stay fiscally sound to do that, to support the folks we serve. And again, the board chair's responsibility are to preside over those sessions. If not, they have a vice chair to cover for them, and as well, to provide and present a monthly written report to the board monthly. Next. The executive directors evaluation committee. The purpose of the, of this committee is to identify the criteria, process, and format by which we evaluate the executive director. The committee presents the recommendations to the entire board of directors who decide the outcome of the director's evaluation. There's a little bit more to it than that. We not only identify the evaluation model, but we aggregate the results that come in from all of the board members. Each of you, as board members, evaluate and, and vote or score the performance of our CEO, of Dana, and then we, as the executive director evaluation committee, aggregate that data and come up with a recommendation for a motion for a bonus. So our evaluation committee has no more than six people. It's made up of the board chair, the vice chair, the board secretary, the chairs of policy management and business ops, and as well, a person on the board who receives services. So this past year, the board vice chair, the board vice chair was also the chair of the policy management, so we actually had one less person than that, as an example. Next slide. So there's also three liaison roles. There's the Citizens Advisory Committee, or CAC, Recipient Rights Committee, which I've been on, and currently John Paul is on, Citizens Advisory, I think that's Malkaya, and then we had Substance Use Oversight Board, and I probably got the name of that wrong, but that's how I recall it as being. And that was Eric, and prior to that, it was Dr. Bob Klotz. So if those have been around one way or another on the board or not on the board, that's who have been in that, in that role in the past. So nominations to be the liaison to these committees are made by the board chairman and confirmed by the board at the October meeting. So if there's someone who would like to be in one of those roles, it's an extra meeting you have to attend. The responsibilities are to attend the meetings, represent the board at that committee, provide and, and present a written report monthly or as often as the committee meets. The reason I say as often as the committee meets is because Substance Use Oversight Board only meets quarterly. So board meeting schedules and attendance. So as you know, we hold our regular meetings not less than once per month. We establish the schedule of monthly meetings for the calendar. We do that in October. We shared the calendar last month, but we will adopt that calendar at the October meeting. It is for the, not the fiscal year, which starts October 1st, but it's for the calendar year, so January to December. Each of the standing committees shall meet on an as-needed basis and, to the extent practically, to establish the schedule of its meeting dates for the calendar year. So theoretically, policy management and business ops could meet separately, but as a, as a, I hate to call it rule of thumb, but as a practice, they've been meeting collectively as a committee of the whole, like today's session. And again, they are chaired alternatively by the standing committee's chairperson. Attendance. Each member of the board shall be present at every session of the board, so that is board meetings, committee of the halls, study sessions, and if they're a liaison to the roles that they're liaison to. And the, the caveat to that is, you're expected to do that. If you can't, please call in to let Sheila know you're not going to be attending one of the three board sessions. If you're the liaison to one of the other committees, please ask at a meeting if you can, you know, if someone else can cover for you. It's really important for the folks that are at CAC or the folks that are at RRC to see a face of someone who's representing our entity. It's that continuity, so it's important. Let me also say, while we're on that topic, if you're not the liaison, it doesn't mean you cannot attend. Of course, you can attend. Like anything else, we welcome it. We've had plenty of times where there's been more than one board member at a CAC and more than one board member who's been at the RRC. Next slide. Any questions? Hadassah, thank you. Hadassah, you may be on mute.
Sorry, no questions. I'll put my hand down, sorry about that.
That's all right. Are there any other questions? Or are there any questions?
I just had a comment.
Yes, John Paul.
So I'm on the Recipients Rights Advisory Committee, but I'm going to step down from that, so if anybody's interested in that, feel free to reach out to me. I can explain more to you and encourage somebody to do it. I've enjoyed it, but I took a new position on it at work, and it's, I'm just, the time's going to be a crunch, so I want to make sure they got good representation from our board, somebody that can be there at all the meetings. So if anybody's interested, it will be available.
Also, you're the chair of the ad hoc committee for bylaws.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, because I want to be able to continue on with the ad hoc committee, so, and as the chair of that, and then being on the Recipients Rights Advisory Committee, and then all the other meetings, it gets to be a lot, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for serving that role. I appreciate it, because I did it before you. I found it to be very exciting. I love the discussion that goes on in it.
It's a great group. I mean, it's fantastic, and I really have enjoyed it.
All right, so some things to think about as we roll into the next board meeting, because I will be seeking nominations for all the positions. We'll see where we go. All right, thank you. Back to you, Christine.
Hey, thank you, Jonathan. It's Rena.
My apologies, I've been calling you Christine all night. It's Rena.
That's okay. That's okay. We have very similar names, they rhyme. Okay, so unless there are any other questions or comments, we can move on to other business. Sheila, I believe you were going to present the 2022 board meeting dates.
They're in the board packet. They were presented last month. It's just a reminder that if anybody had any issues with any of the proposed dates, please let us know. This isn't a probable item at the general board meeting. Does anybody have any questions or any concerns about the dates proposed? Thank you.
I don't see any questions here. Thank you, Sheila. And then Ms. Lesenby, you're going, oh, sorry, Malkaya, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Sheila, I did have a question about, I think it's February and March meetings, the committee of the whole, and the board meeting are moved up, and I wasn't quite sure why. Could someone give an explanation on that? Instead of being the second Monday that we normally have for, for February, and March is the first, and then the board member, board meeting, excuse me, is moved up as well, and is not the, this winter conference in February because it's the same week, so, and I looked at Jewish holidays, and that didn't have anything to do with it, so I just wasn't sure why that was changed.
Is it because of President's Day?
It is. President's Day is the first Monday. So I have March 7th, is that the date you're asking?
And February.
February day, February is the 7th as well, the first Monday, and it's because of the President's Day is the following week. Does that make sense?
No, I'm sorry. The, the.
We're off on President's Day.
So February 14th is.
President's Day.
Is President's Day, so you pulled the committee of the whole meeting earlier.
Correct.
And March.
February.
No, it's both of those months consistently.
Yeah, for February, it's President's Day.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Sheila. I'm sorry. Yes, I get that now.
Okay.
Okay.
And March 7th, let me look at.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure about March 7th. Okay, we can move that to.
I'll just sort of say.
The 14th, and then the board meeting on the 22nd.
Of March.
Where does that, where does that put study session? Because that's at the 24th, that would have to be.
Study session would be the 24th.
It's the.
And then actually, that's the reason why I did it. So the third week, okay, so March 7th. So the third week, okay, so March 7th would push it up, the third week and the board week would be the 15th. So you would have the COW on the 14th, because that is the second Monday. And then you would have the board meeting on the 15th, because that is the third Tuesday. So I pushed the COW meeting to the 7th in March, because to have it the week prior to the board meeting.
Because everything surrounds our board meetings.
Correct.
Generally, our general board meeting.
Yeah, because the way it happens is the second week and the third week, all are in the same week. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the second Monday and the third Tuesday happen to be in the same week because of where the beginning of March falls.
Right. So I moved the COW up one week instead of moving to other board meetings, the, the study session and the board meeting. I just moved the COW up one week.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
We have a similar.
You're welcome.
We have a similar one in November as well, first Monday.
Yeah.
But then we're squeezing the study session if we have one.
Right.
Because of Thanksgiving.
So, is it good as proposed? Well, I mean, we can vote on it. I just didn't know if you wanted to change.
I think it makes sense.
Okay. I just didn't think you wanted to come here twice.
It's a good place. This is the right meeting to have the conversation. Then we'll vote on it at the other meeting, because it's, it's on the consent agenda.
Correct.
At the next board meeting. So there won't be discussion, it'll be just an up or down.
Correct.
Back to you, Rena.
Okay. And then Ms. Lazzanby, you're going to just talk about retirement that's happening.
Good evening again. This is Dana Lazzanby. Ooh, we've got a little background. At a previous meeting, we had been requested to announce any impending retirements, and so today I'm announcing Kathy Yunker is retiring November 1st. And I don't believe we have any plans set for celebration yet, but they are in the works. So as soon as we get everything confirmed and how we're gonna salute Ms. Yunker, we'll let you know. Calli?
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
All right. And then Jonathan is going to talk about the Metro meeting.
Yes, you've probably seen a number of different emails about the Metro meeting. As I understand it, it is a virtual meeting. It's hosted by Macomb, and it is for Thursday, December 2nd. Okay, so that way it doesn't get in the way of our study sessions, and it doesn't get in the way of any conferences. It happens to follow one week after, do I have this right? Nope, I've got it wrong. Okay. It follows one month and one week after the Traverse City Conference. Okay? So it's December 2nd. Again, it's one of those sessions where we get to mingle, even if it's virtual, with Macomb and with Detroit Wayne's board members and other staff. So, just want to make sure that everyone notes it, puts it on their calendar. As well, I'll roll right into the next topic, which is in-person meetings. The Open Meetings Act, under current state regulation, runs till December 31st, 2021. So the end of this year, we can still at our own option meet in-person or virtually, but come January, we will not have that opportunity. It'll all be back in the, it'll all be back in the office, it'll all be back here unless the state legislature passes something else, or unless the governor calls a state of emergency. So I just thought I would remind people that that's what's going on. So we have another two and a half months of virtuals and hybrids. And then after that, it's back into the, back into the meeting room here. The other thing to remember about this is look ahead on the calendar and RSVP to let Sheila know if you're going to attend these sessions, virtually or in-person. So it's either yes or remote, I think is the options on the, on portable. All right? But that way she can make sure the room is set up appropriately, with the right number of tables socially distanced. And if it's, if it's one of the sessions where there's also some sort of snack or food, she has a reasonable head count, so that we're not being wasteful, not only with our dollars, but also with the food. All right? Back to you, Rena.
Thank you, Jonathan. And thank you, Sheila, for always getting the room set up for all of that. Appreciate it. Okay, and then Christine is going to talk about just some event updates and outreach and awareness.
So, good evening again. I was just looking at this list and just for the board's information, I'm going to modify it, so it's easy for you to identify those events which we are hosting, and events where we are participating or have been asked to speak. So in regard to this list, the PPE delivery to the drop-in centers, the clubhouses also, we did some deliveries to the SUD. This was an extension to the deliveries we did in September. You may recall, we had applied for a grant, we had a significant amount of PPE to deliver our wonderful facilities. Team made sure that the drop-in centers in the clubhouses had a sufficient amount of masks, hand sanitizer, whatever they needed, and delivered that for us. So I was really grateful for them to volunteer. We are hosting the World Mental Health Day webinar. Kevin Fisher from NAMI will be speaking. The mental health listening session, Dana is sitting on the panel, and I believe Malkaya has been invited as a person from a peer perspective. Dana will also be speaking at the Michigan Diversity Council Disability Summit. And then our new director, clinical director, Adam Hamilton, and Edna, Director of Human Resources, will be keynote speakers at the WIC State Conference in October. The other events, oh, the Crisis Intervention Team Training, I cannot forget that one. That is also being hosted by OCHN. The other events, we will either be present with the resource table, or just as for the Out of the Dark Walkness, we'll have a team there as well. And I will say that that list is always going to change. One month it may look really busy, other months it might not. We have never, as long as I've been here, anytime we've been asked to be somewhere with, to have a resource table or someone speak, we've never said no. So we make sure that we are available for all of those community events. Jonathan?
Jonathan, we can't hear you on the video.
Sorry, I hit it twice. I was looking for an opportunity where we could post some of these on, on our board calendar, so we know when there's an opportunity for us to let you know that we're thinking of coming, and then we show up and you're not surprised. Or on the OCEAN regular events calendar for things. So more of the public is aware of all the outreach, all the things we're involved with, so they can too participate. That greater awareness of what is it that OCEAN does?
Some of the, the external community events, I read your email, and I will work with Sheila to make sure that those events are on the board calendar. Gets a little more complicated with the number of community events to put all of those on. But what we can do, because I thought about this, there are links and platforms that we are part of in the county where everybody posts their, their events. And so we can put a link on our calendar that says to view all community events in Oakland County, click here. So I, I appreciate you asking that question, because it made me think, what could we do differently so that the, the calendar itself doesn't become overwhelming? So we can make that adjustment. It'll probably be implemented with our website redesign as, as part of that planning and outlook of how we want to expand on our outreach efforts.
Can we provide just the link on the dashboard? Or do you want it specifically on the calendar?
I wasn't sure. I'm just trying to look for ways to where, increase our awareness and also increase the public's awareness of things they could participate in. I'm, not, not all of these should be on there. But, you know, if we're trying to, if we're trying to bring up our public awareness of why, you know, why the public solution is the better way to go, then this is just one more thing.
Yeah. No, I agree. That's why I thought real quickly, okay, what do we have out there that we can connect that gives people those options, and so they're aware? So we'll make sure we make that adjustment on the calendar. Then the next slide, please. Just wanted to give you an idea of some of the observances that we are recognizing in October. We take different approaches each month, because you can't obviously put a proclamation out and a resolution out every month, they, they lose their impact. So we will sit down and discuss, what did we do last year? What can we do differently this year? There's always a social media component. We often send out press releases specific to our, the population of individuals we serve. So Halloween is one, we try to address sensory challenges for youth and give tips to families. But then not on here, I think, because it's new, and things happen for us on a daily basis. But one of the initiatives that we are working in, in response to the media coverage about social media and the impact on mental health, we are partnering with the Health Division, and we're partnering with the Alliance to put out an infographic and a press release and information, so that families and individuals can be aware of signs where social media may be having a negative impact, and then how to respond to those reactions and giving some tips. We're actually just waiting for the press release to be approved by the Oakland County Health Division. Our clinical team was amazing. We had our intern did some research, the clinical team compiled all the information, so we're very excited. I expect, I will be sharing that with this board as soon as it's finalized, but that information will go out this week. So those are just the types of things that we do impromptu, as we're made aware of need within the community, and to be responsive. Our advocacy initiatives, our chief clinical officer, Kimberly Flowers spoke at a previous hearing. She was phenomenal. I had one of the senators approach me three weeks later, or two weeks later, at Walk a Mile, to just let me know how impressed she was with her speech. And, you know, this one, the hearings do not need to be posted before, 18 hours before the event, so they're, they're, it's a moving target a little bit. So there was a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but I learned today that that meeting has been canceled. So we are present when we need to be. We do have staff and people we serve who have volunteered. We sent out a calendar with a list of proposed hearings and asked that we always have people present in the room, even if they are unable to give testimony, just to make sure that their presence is felt. That is all I have for you. Any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Christine. Okay, we're at our second opportunity for public comment.
And we do not have any public comment via the online forum or any listed in the chat, but we do provide two opportunities for individuals to write a public comment and at our next meeting, our meeting next week, at our board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And board member comments?
Dr. Hans?
No comment. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
Thank you for the presentations tonight. And I thought the discussion about the contracts were really informative, and I know this has gone on for several months, but I really liked the, the way we've integrated the community events into the committee of the whole as well. So thank you, and I'll see you next week.
Thank you for all of the staff preparation with the presentations that were given tonight. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone. I do want to encourage those that can to take part in the listening sessions, log on and, and hear what we have to say. I think it's an opportunity that we can't afford to miss. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Ms. Root? Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, everybody. No comments. Have a good night.
Mr. Torres?
No comment. Thank you.
Mr. Cowan?
No comment this evening.
Dr. Todd?
Yeah, we've been seeing a lot of the more contracts that we hadn't seen in the past for approval, and I really appreciate it. And I know it's a little extra work for the staff to make the presentation, but it's not a hard sell. And I feel more a part of the organization, knowing a lot of the little things and how we do business. And even if we don't remember every single one in detail, it gives me a feeling of being more a part of the organization, knowing these contracts. So I really appreciate it. And everybody have a nice week.
Mr. Landsman?
Thank you. I want to thank the staff for putting together all of the presentations. Anya for clarifying the revenue and the whole mix of rates and all that. Got to love what they do up at the state. I'm glad they're there, but sometimes I wonder. Wish they'd come down here and walk a, walk a few days in our steps and, and see how the rubber meets the road. All right, thank you.
Dr. Guadalupe?
No comment tonight.
Ms. Roots, mic's not working. She just said no comment. And Ms. Namie Dyer?
Thank you, everyone, for all of the presentations today, and no other comments from me. Okay, so we should be able to move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn our meeting. Malkaya.
Thank you, Malkaya.
Jonathan, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Bye. Bye. Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Night.